Deficit. So I want to recap some of the numbers I've just shared with you and in hopes to kind of reconcile you back to where we are today. So I talked in my first slide about 1.2 million dollars of additional state aid. I think I just mentioned in the last slide that we had about a $60 change in our pilot revenues and that's what that $60 is there. And then, as I think folks are aware, our cabinet has been meeting with principals and directors and going through budget runs and, I'm sorry, budget reports and looking at enrollment and a variety of things. And so we've had some changes in salaries and wages that I'd like to report here. I'm just going to put one caveat on that. We're still looking at enrollments. We're still, you know, as you may be aware, we're moving from SIS, our student information system, to school tool. And in connection with that, we're just making, dotting our i's and crossing our t's and going through class size and enrollment numbers and just making sure that we have the proper staffing. But at this time, we're looking at the following adjustments, and I'll walk you through them quickly. Title grant adjustment. We have title grants that we receive, and in those grants, we pay for certain personnel costs. But when we fact, unfortunately, the grants aren't increasing, and we factored in our increased cost of benefits and our increased cost of wages. And we needed to shift a little of the cost that was being paid for by the grant back to the general fund. And in our initial budget, we estimated that a little too high. So we're actually putting $52,000 back into the grant that helps the general fund. That's why it's a positive number there. For teaching assistants are retiring, and with our special aid, special ed study, special education study, we think that, at this time anyway, we may be able to absorb those retirements, and that's why that's listed there. We looked at the secondary staffing, and we're looking at the possibility of about a 1.7 additional teachers required to properly staff the secondary level. We would need two additional special education teachers, again, in connection with the special ed study that was done, to properly staff the special education team. And then, based on enrollments at the elementary level, we are looking at two less elementary teachers. And we're also looking at a 0.8 reduction in some of the special areas, again, due to enrollment. We're also including in our budget here, two additional consultant teachers, to make sure that our newest teachers have the support that they need. And again, in conjunction with the NSCA agreement that we have, that those supports in place. And then we have this thing called breakage. So we had a number of retirements this year that were announced in the beginning of February. And we've calculated that the difference between the new teacher salary and the retiring teacher for all of those people is about $209,000. So the total changes in salaries and wages is about $243,740. And then net change in expenditures, there's a lot of moving pieces there. We just aggregated it as one line item. I would tell you that the largest savings comes from fuel and from utility costs. And then, in order to get the budget to balance, as I think I mentioned earlier, we were disappointed that we didn't get more state aid. We really needed about 1.4 million of additional state aid. We only got 1.2. Our budget subcommittee chatted, and we thought it was appropriate to take another $200,000, appropriate another $200,000 of fund balance to get the budget to balance. And so I know there's a lot of numbers there, but that's the roll forward of our, from our initial budget to our current budget deficit. Some of this is repetitive, but what are the implications in terms of, you know, these numbers? We're still able to continue. Our two teachers that are on special assignment, they're instructional technology coaches that are doing great work, helping our teachers with technology. We're still able to continue our one teacher that's on special assignment. It's an instructional coach for writing, and that has been, you know, very fruitful. And so we're really, really happy to be able to leave that in the budget. There are no layoffs required to balance the budget, and there are no reductions in student programs. To be very clear, we are eliminating some positions due to enrollment, as mentioned on the previous side, but, previous slide, but there are no layoffs, and there are no reductions in student programs contemplated by this budget. And, you know, disappointingly, the final state aid numbers will not allow for the restoration of some critical programs that have been cut in recent budgets. And they range from instructional, support services, administration, co-curricular athletics. There's a lot that we were very hopeful, going into this budget cycle, we would be able to add back into the budget. So, kind of just summarizing where we're at, we're looking at a budget of $155.2 million in revenues. As we've talked about in the past, the two biggest component of our revenues are that tax levy, which is about 53% of our revenues, and state aid, which is about 44%. You'll see on the top of the chart, although it's a small percentage, our fund balance appropriation is now 950 as opposed to 750, which is what it was last year. But state aid and tax levy make up most of our revenues. And one of the things we're looking, just in total, this is a $4.3 million increase, $4.4 million increase in total revenues, or about a 2.9% increase in revenues. Again, the tax cap being 890,000 or about 1.09% increase. On the expenditure side, again, the two biggest pieces of the pie are salaries and benefits, 46 and 31% relatively. And then, we spend a lot of money with BOSI's at about 9% of our budget. 7% of our budget is debt service. That is our, that's the money that we spend on paying our mortgage, basically, our debt. This slide is somewhat redundant of that, but again, it's a 2.9% increase in spending. Whoops. And a couple of additional thoughts on expenditures. Health benefits, we've made some assumptions here. As everybody might remember, in October, we moved from Pomco to Exelis as our third-party administrator. We've put some assumptions in here. Hopefully, we will realize some benefits. We're planning on realizing benefits as opposed to a better network with Exelis. Retirement costs, we have factored in here the lower retirement costs for TRS and ERS. Salaries and wages, our contracts for next year, for the most part, have a 3% increase, and that's been factored in. The fuel costs, I mentioned earlier, we're assuming some savings, but I just wanted to remind everybody that it's net of transportation aid, and we have included some energy savings costs as a result of a three-year supply agreement that we've entered into with BOSI's. And we continue to evaluate opportunities to work with BOSI's to control costs and to provide services. I showed this slide last time. Basically, since in my relatively short tenure with the district, I think it's my fifth budget cycle with the district, we've remained in the second-to-last place in terms of expenditure per pupil. And only one district has lower spending per pupil than our BOSI's. And looking at our peer group across the state in larger districts outside of our area, North Syracuse spending is relatively low per pupil. We're ranked statewide 652 out of 669 school districts. Our vehicle bonding proposition, the board approved at the last meeting, the, at least the language for the referendum. And so the voters will be voting on the following vehicles: 10 65-passenger diesel school buses, 1 42-passenger diesel bus with three wheelchair positions and a hydraulic lift and air conditioning. As we've mentioned before, our special needs population often require, the IEPs require air conditioning. Got another bus there with air conditioning. We're replacing one of our older Suburbans and a very old bucket loader that we use for snow removal and for grounds projects. And that total cost of those 14 vehicles is about $1.5 million. Tax impact after transportation aid but before STAR is about $2.10 per year for a house assessed at $100,000. The fund balance, I wanted to just update you. I've indicated on this slide the updated appropriation of 950,000. If we compare that to the budget, we're projecting for 16, 17, our fund balance would be about 3.65%, still below the target of 4% that New York State has. Our reserves, 1.7% at the end of last year, estimated to be about 2% this year, you know, of our budget for 15, for 16, 17. So kind of, in summary, although the GEA has been eliminated, foundation aid is still significantly lower than required to provide a sound basic education, and it's something of great concern. Tax cap formula does not allow for sufficient increases in the levy. You see that we're looking at a 1%, 1.09% increase. We're concerned about if this tax cap legislation doesn't change. If something doesn't give here, we're concerned about our ability to enhance programs and even maybe sustain current programming. State aid and tax levy increases do not support the restoration of the programs that I mentioned earlier. And we still have a lot of positions and programs that have been cut since the Great Recession. And then finally, our reserves and fund balance that I just shared with you, they continue to be, continue to be lower than other districts in our area and across the state.
Don, just because we're talking about the tax cap formula, one of the things that changed was we no longer are able to go to a contingency budget, correct, if we go over that tax cap?
If you go over the tax cap and the voters vote down the...
This came up when I was talking to one of the newer board members, and I just want to make sure that I had the information correct.
Right. No, it's a good, good point. So if we, if we, if the vote fails and the budget is voted down, we, our levy would be the levy that we had this year, which is the top number on here, 81,884, I'm sorry, 81,884,000, as opposed to what we're looking at here of 82,774. So if it got voted down, we'd lose that $890,000 of additional revenue.
First vote?
No, no. That, no, that's if you are incapable of getting voters to approve it through the two votes that you'd have.
Two votes.
You get one, we do one in May, we do one in June. If you failed then, in the good old days, you had a contingency formula that basically said, this is what you'd get. Now you basically go back to last year's levy.
So by going, by asking for more than that, we need the supermajority, we need the 60%.
Right. So if you, if you want...
The reason why it's difficult for me to remember is because when we tried to go over this tax cap before, we lost by 52 votes. And that was, you know, I mean, that was, you know, 52 people is a ridiculously low number to have a budget go down. So I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I guess that we're considering that, that that's, I guess, in the back of our heads as we're talking about this.
Yeah, I think one of the things we've talked about is that if we did go for, if the board decided to go for a levy in excess of the tax cap, one of the political things that works against us is that the taxpayers would lose their rebate. And so that creates a lot of pressure on the system.
And that rebate is lost even if we decide to go back to the tax cap, correct? If we, if we put the, the more than the supermajority out at any point, we lose that rebate.
I don't know that. I think if you, if you, if the vote is, if you ultimately pass at the tax cap, then people get their rebate. If you don't, then, yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
If the voters approve above the tax cap, the rebate's gone.
Right.
I thought it had more to do with us attempting to go beyond that.
No. If we end up at or below the cap, the rebate will stay.
Right. Any, any other questions or comments?
No. This slide here, I don't know.
Oh, I see.
Per people's expenditure. Have we ever looked at our ranking, I think it's called tax rate on true?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Where do we fall there? Do you have a rough idea?
Yeah. So when I come back next time, I'll actually, I'll update those numbers. But for one of the larger districts in North Syracuse, our tax on true is actually on the low side. We're lower tax on true value. And I'll just say this, I'll just as a, because of our wealth and our real estate values here in North Syracuse, we should actually have a higher tax on true than Fayetteville, Manlius, Skinny Atlas, and other districts that are wealthier because their houses are worth more than ours. So their tax rate should be lower than ours. And so, yes, that's a very good point. We're not the lowest. If you, when we look at our tax on true across the area, but when you look at our comparables, those big five or six districts, our tax on true is on the low side.
But, you know, something, I guess, to consider, because you just pointed out that, you know, Skinny Atlas and Fayetteville are wealthier areas. But those areas, in consideration to New York State standard, are not wealthy districts. They are not wealthy areas because they're still a 0.5 something, 0.6 something, and 1.0 is what they consider a standard or average income area. So they're still well below the average for New York State as a whole, correct?
I don't know their wealth ratios off the top of my head, but I'll bring that information back to our next meeting if you'd like. I can do a slide on tax on true. Any other talks?
I have a question, Don.
Sure.
Can you explain why the tax cap is so low? I know people had assumed it was 2%, but can you just explain that?
Sure. If you look at, if you look at the, that thing called the allowable levy growth factor, that's kind of the big driver in our, in our ability to increase the levy. And it's basically 2% or CPI, the Consumer Price Index, whichever is lower. And so CPI was .0012, less than 1%. You know, and so that's why our levy increase is just so low. That's the, the big driver.
So basically, cost of living.
Our cost, you know, inflation wasn't there, and therefore, the thought process in the formula is you can't increase your taxes if there isn't an increase in inflation. Liz?
Yeah. If you go back to foundation aid, is it true, I mean, I've heard your presentation a few times, Liverpool gets 1,000 more per pupil than we get?
Yeah. Now, in that number, that, that's total state aid. So the interesting thing about foundation aid is that, and this, this kind of manifested itself this year in the, in the budget, and I think it made the, a difficult job for our legislators. Some people that already had their GEA fully restored, or it wasn't a big issue for them. And so, and some districts only cared about foundation aid because they knew they were not getting as much foundation aid. There are districts in New York State that are actually getting more foundation aid than their full phase in amount. North Syracuse was one of those districts, unfortunately, where we needed GEA restored and we needed our foundation aid increased. And we got the GEA, we didn't get the foundation aid to the extent. But, but I think the point that when the economy hit the skids, all these state aid formulas were put on hold. So they're not running, they're not operating. So what's happened is, is that things have gotten out of whack. And so what was a bad set of formulas that was attempted to be fixed with foundation aid, got put on hold. And, and the way, the disparity in the way school districts are funded, it's inequitable. It's, it's not fair. Districts of the same wealth ratio will get dramatically different amounts in state aid. And yes, it can be as much as $1,000 per pupil. And hey, in our world, where we almost have 9,000 students, can you imagine if we had $9 million more and, you know, we'd be restoring some of those programs that we've, that we've been so desperately wanting to restore. And that, that is the crux of the problem, is that the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit determined how schools should be funded, and it has never been implemented. And this is the consequence of that failed implementation.
Talking about the state aid formula being inequitable, Anne Koffner, I was looking for her to see if she was here. She, every budget year shows up at these meetings, typically wearing a budget pin that said that this was inequitable. And she was a board member when I was a student at Bear Road myself. And she's been... at Bear Road myself, and she's been wearing that pin since then.
Yeah.
So we're talking about the early 80s. This isn't something that's new to the process. But is it, is Liverpool truly getting $1,000 per pupil, or are they spending $1,000 per pupil more than us?
No, their spending per pupil is actually a lot higher than that. They're just, their state aid was, was higher than ours. And it's a moving target, though. I have to, I have to tell you that every, I didn't study their runs from this year, I don't know how the implications of this, this budget cycle.
Well, if you look at, if you look at districts that typically have a higher poverty ratio than we do, which ours is fairly high, but if you look at other districts that have a higher poverty issue, they typically do get more state aid and rely less on their voter population to fund their programs.
Right, and when we look at our comparatives, we try to compare ourselves to districts of comparable wealth ratio, comparable free and reduced lunch rate, you know, and I say size, there isn't anybody here in central New York of our size necessarily, but, you know, the larger districts that have similar economic attributes, economies of scale, and, you know, numerous schools and things like that.
Do you, do you think that you could give a ballpark as to how much money we have, you know, because this was a big push for the governor, that we were going, that by using BOSI services or by sharing services, how much we've saved over the past couple of years?
I could, I could get that for you, I just don't have it off the top of my head, you know? And the other thing about BOSI services, it depends on the service. So, you know, we always talk about our BOSI's aid rate, but our aid rate, depending on the service, you're buying, you're basically buying a service, and depending on the human resource cost of that service, it can, it affects the aid rate. But any, at a minute, you know, in our, with our BOSI services, we do have a pretty high BOSI's aid rate, so we do get aid for anything we do with BOSI's.
But...
Whereas we wouldn't if we didn't.
But I do think that we've discussed in previous meetings that if they feel as though, you know, employees should receive a $50,000 compensation, that's what they give us, even though they may be receiving a higher...
Yeah, so the, our, our BOSI's salary cost that's aidable, actually, it increased in this budget cycle, but nominally, it's just a little over $30,000, and beyond that, it's not aidable.
Right.
So that's, that's, that is the factor that somewhat diminishes the aid rate, depending on the service. But I think the next battleground is this foundation aid. You know, I look at this and I just think to myself, if we had gotten $9.4 million more foundation aid this year, you know, North Syracuse would not be in the dire financial straits that we're in.
Well, I don't remember, Rick Timms gave, the presentation that he gave this year that was, you know, greatly, I guess, I don't even know how to word it, because it was just disappointing. I mean, to be honest with you, I would just say it was just plain disappointing. We had gap elimination, we had people beating drums, we had, we had rallies, we had people talking about gap elimination, and they continued to talk about it this year. But the, the funding, equitable funding of schools, where we see 9-point-something-million dollars here, he's talking, he was talking a figure of like 9-point-something-billion dollars across the state, and, I mean, that's a, that's a significant number, that's an eye-opening number, and we didn't get people, we had, what did we have here? We had maybe 100 people, if that, where the year prior, we had an entire auditorium, you know, we had 2,000 people in that auditorium, and, and it appears as though people don't understand the, the funding or lack thereof, and I guess the process. I mean, we started this process, when was the first budget subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, before, before Christmas, November, yeah. But I think these are complicated, I mean, the, the state aid formulas are complicated, the, the state economy's complicated, and I just, again, I'll go back and say, you know, that the, the community, the board, the, the staff and, and union leaders and students did a great job talking about GEA, and now we have to do the same thing about foundation aid until that gets, until that gets funded at the proper levels. A lot of work went into that lawsuit, and a lot of evidence shows that these are the right funding levels to properly fund public education, and, and so that's, that's the next battleground.
I don't know if I have a question, but you, you open up a fascinating discussion. So until that time, there's my question, what do we do? Patrick, you said it well, I mean, you could go back to, what, 2007, but if you go back further than that, as far as I can remember in my world, it's been ever enough, never enough, and then when we get to the budget, we wipe the sweat off our brow because we didn't get killed. And it seems like that's where we are again here. We're relieved that we're not cutting, but we're not moving anywhere. And I, I know I don't, there's not an answer to this statement.
Well, I...
I just get frustrated that we need a plan...
To be honest with you?
To get beyond this.
My first year sitting at this table, it was very frustrating to me because we were, this was before tax cap. We were funding, and this is before Don, this is, and that was Human Resources, I mean, this is before we even, this was superintendents before and that, we were educating to our budget versus budgeting to our education process. So we, we have, you know, and unfortunately, we have historically had a community that, I mean, going back to, going back to when I was in school, we had budgets that went down that were, it was a historical event, that they, you know, they, I mean, you, you were building a home in Dominion Park at that time, I'm sure. So I mean, it's, that's...
Talk of me.
But I mean, that's, that's what, that's what the reality was, and unfortunately, we were all too cognizant of it, you know, at the time, and we maintained that. So when we, when this 2 percent tax cap hit us, we were already behind the eight ball because we didn't have huge reserves. We were using reserves that we didn't have a lot of to try to reduce the tax levy going into this. So, you know, I mean, it's, this has been a longstanding issue with trying to rally the community around supporting this, you know, they, it appears as though, you know, when, I don't know if last year you got the feeling, the most vocal people, when you're out shaking hands and welcoming people and thanking them for coming to, you know, vote on the budget, you're thinking to yourself, I really shouldn't have thanked them because I know it's a no vote. You know, it's, it was, it's not always a good feeling when you're out there, you know, because we, but...
I share, I guess what I'm trying to say is I share your frustration.
Right, I just don't know where else, what other venue there is to discuss where we go from here. I, I guess my example, I don't know what else to say, but, you know, we were here last two weeks ago, letter was read to us, and I got the copy of that and looked at it when I went, came in a Connie Senate a few days later.
Right.
I'm looking at that, and then I'm going back and thinking of the BPT presentations, everything's wonderful, here are the strategies, what we're doing, and then I read this. Now, there are things on there, I'd like to know what's true. I mean, the one that stuck out, I mean, there, I don't want to shed, you know, I want to shed light on everything there, but the one that stuck out, we talked about, the 40 percent seniors that are not in classes, so I didn't see that in the BPT presentation, I'm not trying to be a wise guy. What I'd like to see, for me at least, as I go forward, is what, what do they need in buildings? What do they need from us? What kind of resources? You can come in and tell me what you're doing and your strategies, but I was floored when I looked at that in black and white on the letter, and just read it without any, anything surrounding, and thought, this is what's not going on. It looked like we're crumbling, and I didn't think we're crumbling. My daughter got a great education here, I would assume that's, I hope that's still the case. I want to feel like we're doing everything we can. And I feel like we sit here as perpetual victims of the state budget. I don't have an answer to that. I don't pretend to have an answer to that. I just like to have a plan.
Right.
That sounds wonderful, but I don't know what I'm talking about, because what, what do you do then?
Right, well, I, I think one of the things that we do...
Without money, but it's not equitable, and Don's correct, we have to fight for foundation aid, but we've been fighting for that. We won that case in 2007, '08, and then all of a sudden, well, we decided we're not going to follow this court order.
Right.
It boggles my mind that the legislature can actually not do that, but they don't have to.
But what, one of the things that you say, what can we do about that? One of the things that we do is, you know, we have, I, I really have to say that I think that does a great job with maintaining a positive relationship. There was a period of time, I won't mention which person in Albany, I, I could not believe that we were continually in the situation that we were in, and then even one of the years, we received federal funding, they came out of the woodwork and said, here you go, here's hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we couldn't use it because it was a day late and a dollar short after we already approved our budget. If our budget's approved and we receive the money, that expenditure figure is what we can spend. So to have somebody give us a federal grant for, you know, the grant is outside of our regular budget, correct? But that's not what that was, that we received, that was one of the last years Dr. Melvin was here, we got, you know, they said they specifically wanted it spent on, you know, bringing people back, laid off people, but we couldn't even use it. They, they don't even understand their system, that's the problem. That's, but we have a decent enough relationship that, you know, I think we can have those frank conversations, let them know that the system is broken in a respectful enough manner that, you know, that they listen to us, they go to the table. We're lucky to have Al Sterpi locally, I mean, and we're lucky to have somebody like Phil Cleary who has the relationship with him that he does, because that brings a lot to the table. You know, I mean, if you, we didn't have the positive relationship, I'm sure this bullet spending that we get, this bullet funding that we get, we wouldn't be getting if, if they didn't like us.
No, and I do understand that. I, I think they get it to a certain point, and to another extent, they don't.
Right.
Because when I went to Albany, it was, well, here's where you are, here's where you want to be, don't worry, you'll be somewhere in the middle. And it was clear when I looked at these numbers, somewhere in the middle wasn't going to cut it.
Right.
And it didn't for us, but we're supposed to feel good because we got more than the governor promised us. So it's not working for me anyway.
Right, well...
But you're correct, I understand.
And to, and to speak to your point about the BBT presentations, I mean, quite frankly, we...
Well, I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm slighting those.
No, 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 no.
I'd like to hear more about what do you need?
Right, but what I'm saying, though, is we're fortunate enough to have people that are doing, that are doing their jobs, and they're doing them well. You know, we are, we are fortunate enough to have those people that actually care about our kids that are going in and out of the doors of our schools. We're very fortunate with our, with our workforce.
I agree, but could we ask them, I'm not trying to change the world here, I'd like to know what, what they're doing without and how we could help them. So at least we have a list.
Now, prior, and this might, I know that the board was divided on this, but there were, where's John? There was white papers. They came to us, and they actually gave us a, an eye-opening, sometimes not necessarily the way we wanted to see our schools, but they gave us a realistic lens into what was actually going on in school. Our teachers were coming on behalf of their buildings and speaking to us, but that was much earlier in the budget process where it was more usable than, you know, where we already have this fixed.
So let me attempt to address this as well. The question was asked, how early did we start working on the budget, and when was the first budget? And I think it was sometime in November, if not earlier than that, because we were hopeful at that point that we were going to get additional funding. And so one of the things that we did as a budget subcommittee was begin to prioritize, if we got money, how could we chunk, putting back in some of the things, co-curricular athletics were pieces that we looked at. In terms of other staffing issues and programs that have been caught based on staffing, there is a list, although it's not, it hasn't been publicized, it's kind of just floating around, and we can certainly put something more definite together and begin to publicize what some of those things are.
Okay, I want to, Don, get back to, I think Patrick mentioned that our reserves have been low, and one of our solutions to balance the budget was to take additional monies out of our fund balance. Do you want to just explain that? And will that put our fund balance, our reserves, in jeopardy for our ratings?
Well, no, actually, I think, and that's what the, this slide attempted to do, was show where we, where we stood with our fund balance, a projection as of the end of this year. If we appropriate the 950,000 versus the 750, we'd still end up with a fund balance of about 3.65 percent, which, over the last five years, we've, we've made progress increasing our fund balance. Going back to the districts that weathered this storm better than we did, they came into the storm with significant amounts of fund balance, and, and so, you know, we're at least at the point now where we're getting close to the New York State target amount, but I will tell you that I believe at 3.65 percent, we have the lowest fund balance in our BOSI's of the 23-component school districts. So, but the $200,000 change, one way or another, is, is not going to, we don't believe will create a problem. And one thing I, that I should mention is that on 155.3 million budget, remember, there's a lot of estimates in there, and we're hopeful that some of them will go our way, and that, you know, you look at this winter, we had a great, who knows what next winter will bring, but our heating costs were lower this winter, not necessarily because of the rate of natural gas, but the outside temperatures were warmer and we used less fuel. And so I'm hoping when we're reporting that June 6, 2016, fund balance, it's a little higher because that line there that says estimated revenue and expense variance, maybe there'll be some expenditures that are positive that will help us with our fund balance, and it's probably a good bet that that number will at least beat the 200,000 we just increased our appropriation by.
Well, when we consider our cost for the retirements, you know, the people that are walking out the door, their, their replacements are not going to be earning the same income as, as them.
And that's, that was that breakage number.
That is figured in.
Breakage number that I had figured in, and so we calculated as part of breakage.
I wasn't sure if that figure was a retirement that wouldn't be replaced, but that's actually...
That's the, that's the difference between...
Okay.
The new hire and the retiree.
A third-year veteran and a...
Exactly.
New teacher.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Just a second, Don.
Oh, sure, thanks, sorry about that. Yeah, so, so today's April 4, obviously, and we just looked at kind of our proposed budget, based on our final state aid numbers. You know, this has been a, a good discussion, and we'll come back on the 18th, hopefully, with answers to any questions you may have, and with the hopes that the board will adopt a budget on the 18th. On that same date, we have our BOSI's election and budget vote, and then on May 3, the budget hearing, and on May 17, the actual budget vote.
Don, I just want, I don't want to sound ungrateful, I do thank you for the work in the Budget Committee. I mean, I think using that fund balance prudently so we don't go backwards is, is a big deal. Frustration's more with the system.
Yeah, I, I think it's safe to say that, just speaking for myself, we share your frustration. I mean, it's a, it's a difficult process at best.
Hey, Don, Don, one more question.
Oh, sure.
If the voters don't approve the tax levy increase...
Yes.
At 890, where will that come from? Have you been thinking about it, or have to come from the fund balance?
In my worst nightmares? No, I haven't been thinking about it. I, I, you know, we go back to that, that levy of this year, 81, 884. No, I haven't, I haven't really given that much thought. I'm, I'm hopeful that with a less than 2, less than 3 percent increase in our budget and a 1.09 percent increase in the levy, that we ought to be able to get one more yes vote than no vote. I think that...
It's, it's unfortunate, but it's 18 years before I have six voters to twist their arms. But eventually, I can get this budget passed just by driving them all myself.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, my God. Ooh, look, there'll be right. Okay, so we move into comments from the audience. We have Mrs. Heffron. We have Mrs. Heffron.
Good evening to our board members, our superintendent in that speech, our other district office administrators, and to our community. I am Shannon Heffron, one of the school counselors at CNS, and I am representing all of the counseling staff throughout the district. Did you know that this year, one of our kindergarteners had to have his teacher remove his shoelaces because he was putting them around his neck trying to hurt himself? Did you know one of our middle school students and their family was held at gunpoint by another family member who was high on heroin? Did you know one of our students at the junior high has been sent to CPAP, which is an emergency room for psychiatric issues, seven times since October and was sent back to school each time? This student is just now, in April, finally going through approval for inpatient treatment. Did you know at CNS, one of our students was living in a tent in Heritage Park, another one of our students was living in his car, and we have another student who came to school after having overdosed? I could go on and on with more stories about the issues that district staff is met with every day in trying to educate our children. Mental health issues in children have increased significantly in recent years. Our kids struggle with issues such as grief and loss, addiction, homelessness, abuse, suicidal ideation, and debilitating levels of anxiety on a daily basis. We, as the school counselors, psychologists, ADAPAP counselors, and social workers in our schools, are usually the first and sometimes the only resource they have for help. While we are not intended to be long-term therapists, the waiting list for outside counseling services is on average four to six months. So we do what we need to do to help our students get through each day. Based on research studies, students are 21 times more likely to seek and accept help in a school-based setting. The number of students in our district seeking or being referred for individual counseling assistance at school has grown by at least 50% in the past two to three years, while our number of counselors has been reduced because of budget cuts. We, as a group, are here to ask that you, as the board, to consider increasing the number of counselors, social workers, and psychologists in our schools. Our current staffing is not sufficient to address the needs of our children. We work in crisis mode on a daily basis, providing triage services without the ability to follow up with them or do prevention work that would benefit all of our students. The counselors in the North Syracuse District currently have the highest counselor-to-student ratios in Anadaga County, not including Nottingham. These ratios are also not within the guidelines recommended by the American School Counsel Association. New York State regulations are requiring that all districts now have a school counseling plan in place by September 2017 that conforms to the ASCA standards. Conforming to this requirement necessitates an increase in our counseling staff. Our immediate need is to increase the counseling staff at CNS by providing a full-time social worker and reinstate the school counselor and counseling secretary positions that were cut in past budgets. In future years, we sincerely hope our district will provide counseling staff in compliance with these New York State guidelines as outlined in our proposal that will be handed out to you tonight. With such a pressing influx of mental health crises, it is a challenge to maintain and support a safe environment. We are an educational institution, but we are unable to assist our students to be college and career-ready because we are so overloaded with the social and emotional issues our students are dealing with daily. However, counselors at every level want to be more proactive and preventive to help our students thrive in school and learn how to cope on their own to be successful in the future. For that to happen, we need more counseling staff to enable the shift toward meeting the social and emotional needs of our students and putting more prevention services into place. We've provided a packet with additional information to each of you, and we thank you for your consideration.
Is that statement in that packet as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm a high school social studies teacher. I apologize if I mess this up a little bit, but this is as prepared as it is. I've been trying to assess where we've been and where we are as a district. I've been wondering what it was like to be on previous boards versus on this Board of Education. The people who made previous cuts, in addition to what we just heard about, they watched people lose their jobs, they, some positions have been eliminated entirely. The previous boards watched class sizes swell, including in the elementary schools, and as little as I know about elementary schools, I guess that's about unconscionable. We've seen clubs put on life support. Until my last breath, I'll never understand why this school doesn't have a Model UN or a mock trial. Combined, they cost about $3,400. We've lost sports teams, primarily at the levels where kids should be able to be on a sports team and give it their best shot. And as we've already heard from you folks, senior years turning into a part-time endeavor, I just, I, that, I'll never be able to wrap my hands around that one. So how do things look now? What's it like to be on the Board of Education at this moment, where perhaps on the precipice of turning a corner, putting us back together, moving us forward? I like what Mr. McAndrew said several weeks ago, that we've survived, we're ready to thrive. I don't envy the previous boards who had to make those cuts. I can't imagine the toll it takes. I recommend anyone who hasn't done so, take a look at whatever data is available, wherever it's available, to see what our district looked like before the recession, the GEA nonsense, the cuts from county government, and every other factor that conspired against us. Anyone doing so should be appalled, angered, and depressed. But it should also help you see that you have an opportunity. It should be easy. You, the board members, can begin to turn that corner, but you need to realize it's never going to happen without going above the tax cap. I try to be optimistic. My, anyone who knows anything about this has told me, in effect, that Donald Trump will eat humble pie before you folks will be willing to go above 1.09%, but I'll continue to hope. If you think the New York State government's going to come to the rescue, the central New York economy's going to improve, CFE reforms, Foundation Aid reform, keep waiting. If you think they're going to rescue us, if you think those are going to rescue us, you're mistaken. Putting forth budgets at the tax cap is a recipe for treading water at best. I mean, in some respects, I assume superintendent's speech and Mr. Keegan relative to the previous years must at least a little bit do a little happy dance, because at least we're able to tread water and not sink any further. Back when the effort was made to secure a supermajority and go above the tax cap, the environment and education was as poisonous as it's ever been, yet we came, I guess we got 58%, which I, Mr. Spaboda, I guess, said it was only 52 people. Since then, the public has learned a great deal about education and what is important, and I hope you're cognizant of that. The state of New York has done the most it ever will for the foreseeable future to not harm us any further. The group in charge of the North Syracuse Central School District is the Board of Education. Nothing's going to happen without your leadership and willingness to do what you all sought election in this office for, and that's to bring us out of the abyss and serve our students. If you lose an election for trying to secure an extra percent or two above the tax cap, that strikes me as noble. If you succeed, which I think you will, you'll truly be serving your aspirations and doing all you can for the students of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you.
Ms. Broccoli? Speaking of noble previous board-
We're going to be here for a positive note, you know, since we've had such a difficult evening here. My name is Toni Lynn Broccoli. For those of you that do not know about the canteen program, we thought we would give a face to the program, since I know, you know, in previous boards, it was kind of a given in my situation that, you know, people would know, oh, yeah, she's the canteen lady. But I don't know a lot of you guys, so I thought I would, you know, come and give a face to a name. And I brought with me Kenzie White, and she's a junior here at CNS High School. So a few months back, we gave you guys, we passed out a newsletter that had some of the statistics and some information regarding the canteen. So we thought we would give you a quick update, reminder of those statistics, and then if you would like us to come back and give a more lengthy presentation and get a little more in-depth about the program itself, we'd be more than happy to do that. We knew that we only had three minutes. We want to get in and out in those three minutes and be on a positive note. So, Kenz, you want to read the statistics for 2015 from the canteen?
Sure.
Thank you.
We have had 610 different youth inside the canteen building, which made 9,640 visits. We've had 61 youth give 600 hours of community service, and we went on 22 different field trips and destinations.
So that is a snapshot of 2015. We have, in the fall of this year, in the fall of 2015 school year, we were averaging 80 young people a day. And it was a little crazy, very busy, a lot of fun. We had a little bit of glitching with the junior high bus, and we're working on that. We've now leveled off to where we have probably between 40 and 50 young people a day. And we're working on our summer field trip schedule. We recently had a star dinner where kids could invite an adult who has had a positive impact to dinner at the canteen. And we had a few teachers, some staff from the junior and senior high invited, some parents, and that was a nice evening. And we'd like to come back on a different day to bring a slideshow, show you some pictures, and see what is really happening. I've been listening to the conversations about the budget, and, you know, I find that really interesting. I'm sad to hear that we're still in the same spot. All these years have gone by and, you know, we're treading water. We are absolutely treading water. But a program like ours in this community is absolutely, we are extremely fortunate that we have a community that supports a program like this, that helps with some of those extracurricular things that can't be afforded by the budget. And we work very closely with the staff, the counseling staff at the junior and senior high school. There was a time when we had three student assistant counselors for the two buildings, and now we're down to one to carry two buildings, and a part-time social worker, so I can understand all of those things that are being said. And we see those social, emotionally issues that kids are seeing. It is something to really seriously consider, because without those social, emotional help, then you're not going to get very far in a classroom. So thank you for allowing us our three minutes. And if you'd like us to come back, I'm sure Connie will look at the agenda, and if it has to be next fall, because you're kind of booked through the rest of the school year, that'd be wonderful. And we'd love to come back and give you a clearer picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have, do we have any board committee reports or comments?
Just to say that the Legislative Committee meets again April 13th, and the Foundation Aid will be the hot topic that we're going to tackle for next year's budget.
Our Policy Committee is meeting next week, April 12th. But I also just want to reiterate some things that were said here tonight and, excuse me, give a thank you to Liz Cash and to Phil Cleary and to our student reps on the Legislative Committee and anyone who has helped to speak to our legislators and make sure that they heard our voices and the gap elimination adjustment is now gone. So I just want to thank everyone.
Mr. Shusa, do you have any updates?
Just very briefly, a couple of things to celebrate, achievements of our students. Recently, the junior high had a National Scholastic Art Award winner, a student named Gina Musumichi, who is an art student of Tracy Lieberman, and she was recognized for her, for a photograph that was entered into that contest. Congratulations to Gina. Also, last week, we had 102 students attend a celebration inducted into the National Junior Honor Society at the junior high school, followed the next evening by 133 students in the National Honor Society at Cicero North Syracuse High School. So congratulations to them. We're very proud of them.
The only thing, you know, that I would like to add is, you know, we hear the comments that came to us tonight, and we certainly appreciate your patience with us as we make very tough decisions. And I appreciate what Dr. Reed said about, you know, these are, it's been, I've been on the board for six years. The first year was an okay budget cycle. Every year since then, they are very, very difficult decisions that are made. They're, they are friends' positions that are being caught or being considered to be caught. I'm very thankful that this year, that isn't on the table. But, you know, I will joke about having six kids that are either in the district or very closely going to be entering the district. It is actually very emotional for me to even mention that Kesa Farada would constantly mention that they weren't her grandkids that she was worried about. It was the 8,000 grandchildren that were, that we are worried about. You know, there have been several conversations that you have in public that are very difficult conversations to have with people, because you have to, you have to look at, there's two sides to every argument. And, you know, I do appreciate the fact that we have moved to a budget subcommittee that certainly starts to look and have those conversations much earlier than we have in the past. And really, quite frankly, us as a board are more involved in the process than we were in previous years. So, you know, I, like I said, I just want to say thank you to that. And, you know, I guess if Toni is still here, one of the things that Toni used to talk about was, you know, kind of in relation to what Ms. Heffron mentioned, is, you know, we have an at-risk population of students, and it's not a small portion of the students. It's all 8,000 of those kids are an at-risk population. So it is certainly something that we need to consider and take a deeper look at, but all kids deserve, you know, the education that we once had. You know, I can stare at Carol and, you know, thank her for, you know, the education that I received while I was at CNS and the mentoring that I got at the time that I participated in a club that she oversaw. So, you know, I just want to say thank you for your commitment to our students, and thank you for your patience with us, and thank you for your respect with your comments tonight, too. So we will move on with the rest of our meeting, but just because of the weather and final four, I will allow the students to come forward and will sign your participation in government paperwork.
[inaudible]
Good name, can't beat it. Good luck, good luck.
You're quite welcome.
You're painful, you are so painful.
Thank you.
The rules are right. Too high.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You get home?
Okay, so let's move forward with the routine action items. Do I have a motion to take A, B, C, and D? The business office reports, I have to admit, are riveting. 54 pages of...
Guidelines, too. That was really good.
Yes. Yeah, I almost forgot how to fix that 90-degree turn on my iPad. I was going back and forth. So, do I, Mr. Harrington has a motion for A, B, C, and D. Do I have a second? Ms. Cash, all in favor of that? That's unanimous. So, the discussion action items, the approval for the district calendar. We already had the question as to how many times we will amend this calendar, but I was assured last, this year has not happened yet.
I think what you're remembering is, two years ago, I think we amended it three or four times because of things that we noticed that we needed to change as the year went on. I believe this current year's calendar, we haven't had to amend, at least not yet.
I don't recall.
And I'm hoping, after all the work that went into this one, that we don't have to amend that either. But I just want to thank the folks on the calendar committee. Several of them are here or were here earlier this evening. They provided a lot of input. I think there was compromises that were reached. I think it's a good calendar. We have two superintendents conference days before Labor Day, one before Labor Day, one after Labor Day, with students starting the Wednesday after Labor Day. The way the holidays fell presented some challenges that I'm not as happy with, but we worked around that. And I will mention that it still has five snow days, and that was a big thing for me. And after looking outside this morning, you know, we were in good shape this year, but I guess one never knows. Hopefully...
We're not out of the woods until after.
Well, I think part of what happened this weekend, in my weekly newsletter last week, I kind of, you know, jumped ahead and began to forecast what Memorial Weekend might look like because I was pretty certain we weren't going to have any more snow days. All I can say is I was glad yesterday was Sunday and not a school day because that might have changed some things. So, I bring this forward after input from the calendar committee, and I think it's...
So, do I have a motion to approve the 2016-2017 district calendar? Ms. Scanlon, Ms. Cash, all in favor of that? That's unanimous. So, do we need any explanation on B and C? And then what about the surplus of non-marketable equipment? No? So, can we take B, C, and D as a group? Mr. Leone, Ms. Cash, all in favor? That's unanimous. Do we need an executive session for instructional support staff or administration, administrative personnel reports? No? Do I have a motion to take A, B, and C as a group then? Mr. Shusta, Mr. Farfalia, all in favor of that? That's unanimous. Then, I request a motion to move into a session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the principal's bargaining unit to review one legal matter relative to potential litigation, to review the employment record of eight individuals with action to follow on the employment record of three individuals. Do I have that motion? Mr. Harrington, Mr. Marizio, all in favor? Unanimous. You look like you want to put your hand up sometime. Okay, so we'll move into executive session. Thank you.